Board meeting in order, if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
All right, move on to approval or amendments to the agenda. Beth, do we have any changes today?
I have no changes.
Thank you.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second to approve our agendas presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off all your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Is there anybody signed up today? Nothing there? Okay, thank you. All right, move on to our first agenda item, the consent agenda items one through twelve.
I'll move approval.
Um, I...
We'll get a second first.
Second.
All right, get a motion second to approve those, but you need to withhold one?
Hold a couple, um, number four and number nine.
I'll amend my motion.
I'll amend my second.
All right, motion second to approve consent agenda items one through three, five, six, seven, and eight, ten, eleven, and twelve. Any other discussion on those items? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, those are carried. Commissioner Schlangen, consent agenda item four.
Item four. On the second page, under county ditch maintenance, on the third to the bottom line, it says program to help decide what we, how to proceed. Was just wondering what language we should have there. How to proceed with the future ditch maintenance system.
Which page are we on, sorry?
Um, page two of number four. Second paragraph through from the bottom line. Yep.
Could you explain that a little better, Commissioner Schlangen?
It says counties that have a ditch maintenance program to help decide what we, how to proceed.
Just, sorry.
It's just a grammatic error, okay.
Okay, so just take out what we?
Yeah.
To decide how to proceed.
Decide how to proceed.
Okay.
Okay, just take the what we out? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine?
Item nine. Were there any fees on this permit?
Yes, there is a fifty dollar fee.
Okay.
And those are issued by the state, so you just sign off on them. They go to the commission, uh, county sheriff and attorney. They look at the paperwork that was provided and then I send that to the state once you guys approve it.
Okay.
So you want to move approval of four?
Approval with, yeah. Yes.
Yes, what?
With the improvements to take out the how to.
Make the motion, please.
Make the motion, approve four and nine.
Approve four and nine, as amended.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that is carried. All right, we're going to move on to our Mike Legislative Update. Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning, Matt.
Chair Johnson and Commissioners, Matt Mossman, Executive Director with the Minnesota Inner County Association. First of all, thank you very much for your continued membership in the Inner County Association. And I noted on the way up as I drove through the turnoff to Duale that I think you were the county's good luck charm for our work this year. Thank you for hosting at Jack and Jim's, our annual meeting back in January. That was a lot of fun and in a good location and a snowstorm interrupted a little bit.
Certainly did.
But we had a, I think, good participation anyhow. Thanks Commissioner Pop and Kapinski for your participation and leadership and on the Micah Board of Directors as well. Well, I'm, there's a lot to talk about. You know, I think if the 2022 session of the legislature ended with some inaction, I would have to say that the 2023 legislative session was nonstop action. And, you know, overall, a very good session for counties. And so we will get into that. Our, the entire team here is here to present today. Just a real quick recap, the, because of about twelve point one billion dollars that carried forward from 2022 session into 2023, legislature started with about seventeen and a half billion dollars of one-time surplus. There's about two billion dollars in terms of the actions that they took of net reductions in tax revenues for the coming biennium and then about fourteen billion dollars of net spending increase. Of that spending increase, nearly a billion dollars is for various types of property tax relief. So we'll touch on that also, but that includes aids to county governments and others, increased property tax refunds, one of the most significant, probably the most significant property tax relief package in a couple of decades. These are preliminary numbers in this table, but the baseline forecast would have been about, just to ground you, about fifty-five point five billion dollars in spending for the state. That'll be up to about sixty-nine point five billion dollars, about a twenty-five percent increase for the coming biennium. It drops back down to about sixty-five billion dollars in the tails because there's a fair amount of one-time spending in this biennium. So I'm just gonna, it includes a, includes a lot of things. Like I said, there's a lot of new county funding that's coming your way, both in the tax aids and credits area, in, in transportation, in bonding, in probation services, in human services, in SCORE, as well as some new costs. That's at a high level. Let me get into some of the specifics. So I mentioned that there was about a little shy of a billion dollars of property tax relief. That includes, and I'm gonna, gonna focus on what's there for counties, and again, these are not, it's not everything that's in the tax bill area, but it's the bigger portions, an eighty million dollar annual increase in county program aid beginning in 2024, I believe, and I'm still needing to verify this for myself, but that, that is the largest increase in county general purpose aid that there's, that there's been historically. There's also nine point three million new annually for increased pill payments. All counties will benefit a little bit from that. Mostly, that'll be in northern Minnesota, but all counties will benefit a bit. Fifteen million dollars in general fund appropriation for soil and water conservation districts. There's also expanded, I should say, a new program for local housing aid that will be distributed to all counties. There's an expanded homestead market value credit exclusion. So right now, under current law, the exclusion, the maximum exclusion, forty percent of seventy-six thousand dollars is excluded from value, so that's a significant benefit to residential homeowners as property levies change over time. That has now increased to forty percent of the first ninety-five thousand dollars in value. So that'll be a tax-based benefit significant to homeowners there. There's also an expanded senior deferral program, expanded both by increasing the household income that you can have in order to be eligible for the deferral of property taxes as a senior, as well as reducing the number of years you have to be in the home in order to benefit. Homeowner, renter targeted homeowner refunds were all increased, both permanently and also there's a temporary increase for 2023, because as you know, one of the things that would have happened had the tax bill passed in 2022 was there was going to be property tax relief and that, that would have helped offset the shifting in values and that sort of thing that was happening across the state as residential property values rose faster than most other categories of property. What happened here is some retroactive relief, so if you are a homeowner who's eligible for a homestead refund or a renter who's eligible for a refund, there's a retroactive applicable to 2023 one-time increase of about twenty percent in the value of your refund. It'll, it'll go up on a temporary basis by about twenty percent, so there'll be improvements that filers will see in their refunds immediately. In addition, broadband was funded at about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars one time over a two-year period. Fifty million of that will be, I apologize, it's twenty million a year, so I think it's going to be forty million for low-density areas for grants. What's different in the low-density areas is the grants can cover up to seventy-five percent of the project costs. And the department sets that definition of low-density areas. And then the maximum grant as well can be larger. The cap on the grant size went up from five million to ten million. I'm just gonna do a little bit of, this next page is gonna be a lead-in to Steve to, to come up with transportation and then for the rest of the presentation, but I'm trying to include one, just to give a sense of what does all this mean for Benton County. You all know sort of what your baselines are, but roughly, it's about eight hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars in a county program aid increase. I failed to mention that the, there's also three hundred million in one-time public safety aid that was included in the tax bill. About eighty-eight million of that will go to counties, eight hundred and fifteen thousand of that on a one-time basis to Benton County. The local housing aid will be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Soil and Water Conservation District money. I don't have the estimates yet for SCORE grants, but this is, there'll be, this is the most significant increase in SCORE grants in, in a couple of decades, about three and a half million dollars a year statewide. That's distributed largely based on population. Transportation money, we're waiting for the official numbers from the Department of Transportation, but we're anticipating for Benton County, based on our estimates, about a twenty percent increase in those revenues, which, by my calculations, would be, once, once things are sort of fully phased in, in terms of the revenue sources, Steve will talk about about a million dollars a year for Benton County. And of course, there's one small reduction that was made in a, tribal governments were included in the homeless prevention aid, which is going to reduce slightly the amount of aid that's going to counties in, in the homeless prevention aid. That's a high level. I can take any questions now. I'm gonna be back up at the end, but it gives you a sense of what all of this is gonna start to play out. This is, these are the big pieces. Community corrections aid is well, is a piece of the conversation. So let me, Steve, turn to you.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's great to be in Benton County.
Welcome, thank you.
Well, we had a big year in transportation. There's no way else to put it. The session, you know, it was a budget year. We hadn't had a bonding bill pass since 2020. A lot of pent-up demand, and this particular session delivered in a, in a big way for transportation. The overall outcome, we ended up with a two-point-six billion dollar bonding slash cash bill, one billion dollars in general funds for transportation, and five hundred and ninety-nine million for trunk highway bonds over three years. So over the next four years, three point eight billion in ongoing dedicated revenue for transportation is a significant bill by any historical standard that we would use. Let me just go through the, the two or three pieces that make up the whole. The omnibus transportation finance bill, a ton of work was done on that. They got a big target, which was a billion dollars, way over anything transportation has had in the twelve years that I've been doing this. And what's interesting is out of the billion dollars, eight hundred and fifty million of it was spent in seven places. I'll just touch on those. A transfer to the trunk highway fund, a hundred and fifty-two million. The matching dollars for the federal IIJA, two hundred and sixteen million. That was done early, back in January. It set a really good tone for the session for transportation, knowing upfront that MinDOT was gonna have the dollars to match the, the significant amount of federal money coming to transportation in Minnesota. The NLX rail line from Minneapolis to Duluth, one hundred and ninety-four million, which will unleash several hundred million in federal money and probably guarantee that that project actually will happen. Local roads and bridges, thirty-six million. The Blue Line LRT, fifty million. Greater Minnesota Transit, forty million. And named, named projects, which is a nice word for earmarks, a hundred and thirty-one point eight million. So a big bill, lots of money being spent in various areas to move us forward. The heart of the whole bill, really though, after years of discussions and failed attempts, was the significant permanent increases in funding for transportation in Minnesota across the state. There are basically five of them that occurred. There were significant tab fee increases. This was something that both houses kind of agreed right up front, and that's gonna produce roughly two hundred and thirty million dollars a year. Mvest increase from six point five percent to six point eight seven five percent is gonna produce about forty million dollars a year. A new fee, delivery fee, the initiative was clearly on the House side. They never even had a hearing on the Senate side. It started at seventy-five cents per order and was gonna produce about two hundred million a year. It ended up at fifty cents per order on orders over one hundred dollars, and the starting point will be a net production of about sixty million a year. And then probably the surprise of the, of the basket full of revenue increases here was they ultimately at the end went back to the gas tax. And basically, it's a inflation escalator-type tax. It's tied to the construction consumer index with a three percent cap per year, and it's projected to produce a hundred and fifty million dollars. So those were significant new additions. I'll just also mention that there was a significant sales tax increase, but that was limited to the metropolitan area of three-quarters cents. So let me just work towards the finish here with touching on the highlights of the bonding bill. There was a lot of pent-up demand. Bonding bills had gotten close to the finish line in two of the last three years, never happened for a variety of reasons, but these are the highlights. One of our platform priorities, the local road wetland replacement program received twelve million in bonds. That's, that was short of what we liked and what the governor had recommended, but it will give the program a, a good boost over the next year to two years. Then there was the all-important local road and bridges and big numbers. Seventy-eight point nine five million for local roads, plus a hundred and forty-six point two million, for a total of two hundred and twenty-five million for local roads. Significant number, essentially matched our platform request number. Local bridges, same combination, sixty-seven million in undesignated money in the bill, and then name bridges, which again is sort of a fancy name for earmarks, an additional forty-one point nine for a total of a hundred and eight million. That came close to reaching our mark in the platform for bridges also, so by far, these numbers are bigger than anything we've experienced in the last couple of decades. Just to touch on a few other items in the bonding bill that's transportation-related, the Highway Railroad Grade Crossing Program received three point six million. Port Development, eighteen million. Safe Routes to School, two point four million. Active Transportation, one point two million. Minnesota Rail Service Improvement, nine point six million, and an additional three million dollars for Greater Minnesota Transit. So out of, out of that two point six billion in bonding, just under five hundred million went to roads and bridges and transportation. So let me disclose by saying, I think Chris is still here, Chris Bird, we work a lot as colleagues. Your engineer does a great job, not just in Benton County, but around the state, and as you know, he's a, a previous head of that organization. We talk frequently, see each other at the Capitol and at our monthly, the monthly meetings, and so we really appreciate that. And I would, at that point, conclude and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
So I, I think one of the big things was the local road wetland replacement. I think that's been on the agenda. You know, they would infuse it with some cash to make, make ends meet, and now we've got something, but I, I can't, I don't know how many years that's been on the docket to get that.
I share your frustration. Needs a godmother or a godfather because it gets off the starting blocks fast usually, gets close to the finish line, never quite crosses it. We thought this year we'd have an extra boost from the governor, who in his budget really had numbers that matched the need, which was eighteen million in bonding, seven million in cash. The House, of course, came out of the gate early with a bipartisan bonding bill, and that's where the twelve million first surfaced. Representative Hanson, the chair of the Environment Committee, had an individual bill for an additional three million in cash. We kind of thought reasonably those two things might couple up. But then, of course, at the time, there was the partisan blockage over in the Senate, and in the end, when it all finally came together, this was the result. Progress, but not a total solution by a, a good stretch, so that's, that's a good catch on your part.
Steve, any highlight on, of corridors of commerce at all that you can share?
Yes. I can mention that real quick. We did make progress on that in a couple of areas, I think. Within the trunk highway bonds, there's going to be an additional hundred and fifty-three million for corridors of commerce, an additional two hundred million for state road construction, and a hundred and sixty-six million for the, the newly famed, named projects earmarks across the state. So that totals five hundred and ninety-nine million inside the trunk highway bond portion, and corridors of commerce will receive a hundred and fifty-three million.
Thank you.
Twenty-three, anything?
Yeah. Members, any other questions for Steve? Why is that podium? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Great work.
Yep, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I represent Micah in the area of both Public Health and Human Services, and it's great to be with you this morning. I'm just gonna move like this for just a second, it's gonna screw things up. So my slides are gonna be kind of small. The print is kind of small because a lot went on and we tried to squeeze it into, into a couple of slides, so bear with us. I think a really good year also in the Health and Human Services area. The first bill I would mention is the Human Services, this is omnibus bill, which that committee is chaired by John Hoffman, Senator Hoffman from Champlin, Representative Noor from Minneapolis. The bill spent an additional one point three five billion in the first biennium and then another one point almost six billion in the second. The final language does include something that we've been working on for a very long time, and you've heard a lot of, of, we had a, a presentation on this at the annual meeting that Benton County hosted in February, I think that was. And it relates to the county cost share for those folks that are, have been committed as mentally ill and dangerous, are sitting at a hospital, state-operated hospital such as the Anoka Metropolitan Regional Treatment Center, and waiting for a placement at St. Peter in this example. This is something that counties have been charged for, for the last many years, to the tune of about sixteen hundred dollars a day when that person has been deemed that they no longer need that level of care, but is awaiting a bed. That cost has been on us for a very long time. So we took, when we started with MIND this year to kind of take part of the population, if you will, as a whole, counties in 2022 paid, I think almost twenty-two million dollars, sorry, we're talking a lot, a lot about bills. It's not billions, it's millions of dollars in this case. And that would be for all people that are sitting at either an Anoka or a CBHH hospital. We decided, let's go after the MIND population first. We did get a two-year reprieve, saving counties about thirteen point two million over the following two years, the next two years. This was championed by Representative Dan Wolgamot and Senator May Quaid. I just want to mention that this is also tied to the forty-eight hour rule, which I think you're all aware of. The legislature passed a few years ago that says that people that are in jails or correctional facilities kind of bumped to the top of that list to getting them into AMRTC. That's been a problem, so I describe this as a reversing, reversed door. We can't get people in, we can't get them out. It's just a, it's, it's been a, a problem. So they've created this forty-eight hour task force. They are to come back next February with some kind of recommendations on this. There are two county folks on, on the task force, one commissioner and one human services director. It will be chaired by AG Keith Ellison and Commissioner, DHS Commissioner Jody Harpstead. And again, the idea is to come forward with some kind of recommendations about resources that are so badly needed in that area. Just want to mention that both the sheriffs and the County Attorneys Association were working on this, so we worked with them on, on this as well. So hopefully, we come to some kind of a resolution on this issue. In terms of the Human Services bill, I would just highlight that there were a ton of rate increases for a variety of direct care service providers, including adult daycare, day support, pre- vocational, employment-based services, PCAs, home care services, disability waiver services, ICF day, day training and habilitation services, and a long-sought increase by the NEMT, the non-emergency medical transportation providers, as well as ambulances. So they did spend a, a fair amount of money on that bill, in that bill, on rate increases. All right, next. The next bill I would mention is then the Health and Human Services omnibus bill. This again is, this is chaired by Senator Wicklund, Representative Liebling. The legislature appropriated one point four billion in new spending for DHS for this biennium and one point five in the tails. And then the Department of Health gets two hundred and, almost eighty-four million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, and additional two hundred and thirty-three in twenty-six and twenty-seven. I'm gonna skip over the next Metro Demo project because it really does just affect the, the seven county metro, metro counties, so I'm just gonna skip over that and mention that the new law creates two new state agencies. One, the Department of Children, Youth and Families, and one for Direct Care and Treatment. And they're in the process of trying to convert the positions from DHS, MDH, Department of Education into those new departments, so that's going to be underway as well. Do you want to mention IT investments? They put a fair amount of money, a lot of money in this area, a hundred and thirty million dollars plus. There's money for service delivery transformation, integrated services for children and families. There's an online behavioral health program locator. There's money to improve Mets, which is a huge deal for, for our county workers. Also, money for MMIS modernization, and they also put money into Minture technology, and that's kind of where they are at this point. So I, we're all hoping that this will lead to less reliance on the green screen technology that counties are still, still using in many cases. The next item I would mention is that they did put a fair amount of money into behavioral health, mental health issues. They did start up funds of four million dollars for the nine-eight-eight National Suicide Prevention Grant. There's another slide on this. Nope, sorry. And that will be funded in the future by the, by a fee placed on wireless carriers, so that's, that's a one-time investment by the state of four million dollars. They put additional money into mobile crisis grants. They're establishing funding for tribal mobile crisis grants. They put money into cultural and ethnic minority grant programs, school-linked behavioral health, first-episode psychosis. And they also put money into the Center for Rural Behavioral Health, which is at MSU at Mankato. There's also a rate increase for mental health services, and they did put ten million dollars in bonding money into behavioral health crisis. And they did put $10 million in bonding money into behavioral health crisis facilities. Other investments, childcare, they did include the basic sliding fee permanent reprioritization. And they also put additional $30 million into basic sliding fee assistance. Family First Prevention was also funded. Kinship Navigator Services, Family Assessment Response, and Evidence-Based Practice Grants are all included in that Family First Prevention bucket of money, which was $25 million per biennium. And finally, they did put additional money into economic supports by increasing the GA benefit and put money into food security. Other things I would mention is there will be continuous MA eligibility for children, so they don't have to be recertified over and over again. The MA copays are eliminated effective January 1 of '24. And there was a COLA for MFP housing benefits. Do you want to mention that the House had a number of measures that's looking at healthcare affordability? They wanted to do, put together a board. They wanted to look at carving out the drug purchasing out of managed care and moving it to fee-for-service. They looked at studying the elimination of managed care altogether and universal healthcare and more. In the end, there's language to study this issue. So none of those things happened at this point, but they're going to look at this over the interim. Another thing I want to mention is early in session, wait a minute, I'm going to go back one more, sorry. Strong investment in public health, I don't want to overlook that. $25 million in emergency preparedness in the first biennium, 22.8 in the second. They created a public health response contingency account of $2.5 million. So that's available in the event there's an emergency. Public Health System Transformation, another $23 million ongoing. They created, or they put money into lead remediation in schools and childcare centers and also modified the definition of elevated blood levels of lead. And finally, they put 1.66 million in each year of the next biennium for AmeriCorps Heading Home, which is for folks that are challenging housing issues. Early in the session, I just want to mention that COVID, first of all, let's go back. COVID has created a lot of problems for your workers in terms of, you know, now having to redo all these AMI applications. I think there's like 1.5 million outstanding. And so early in session, the legislature did put aside some money to assist counties in this. $36 million went to counties effective July 1. And this is, again, to assist with the resources that will be needed to process those applications. They also put additional money into the DHS Central Operations and some money into MinSure as well. So that was signed in March, so that is in effect. I don't know if your dollars have started to come in, but they should be. Lastly, I just want to call out some of your staff that I work very closely with. Bob Cornelius, Sandy Shoberg, Jaclyn Litvin, all very much present and part of our organization. They participate at every level, and we know they're just a phone call away when needed. With that, I would conclude and say we think we're done until Monday, January, sorry, Monday, February 12th. We think. No more special sessions hopefully this year. There may be one session, I should just mention that special session that would relate to the merger of Sanford and the Fairview Health System. There's some talk about that possibility, but I think it would be very limited to that issue.
Thank you, Nancy. Members, any questions?
Yeah, I got a question on the two new agencies that they're creating. Will some of that come down to counties' responsibilities?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, we, you know, expressed our concern about that. Are we going to have further siloed agencies now? And that was the concern. We do have language that says that they're going to look at experts in the mental health area when they're looking at the Department of Drug Care and Treatment as an example. So I think counties will have a voice at that table. They're seeming, they're acting as though it's going to be fairly seamless, but as we know, it never is. Supposedly, the funding and the existing employees are just going to follow to that new agency. But this is so new. We had a meeting with DCT last week, and they're just kind of in the process of trying to figure all this out. Right, right. And then the other agency, the Children, Health and Families, again, will take employees from those respective agencies, DHS, MDH, education, and move them into the new agency with a focus on children's services. So more to come on this, I know. What could go wrong? Is that?
What could go wrong? Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Members of the Board.
Morning.
I'm Carly Stark. I cover public safety and corrections for MICA. I will be pretty brief with my update. There is a lot that happened in Corrections and Public Safety, which you'll, you can read in detail about that when the summary comes out soon. The biggest thing is Community Corrections and Probation Services. We got a change in the way the money's distributed and an increase of $43 million. And as part of that, there's a Community Supervision Advisory Committee that has a strong county, has strong county membership to try and make sure that there's a collaborative approach to probation policy. Right now, the Commissioner of Corrections has a lot of authority in setting those policies. We wanted to make sure that there's a way to continue collaboration, no matter who is the commissioner at any given point in time. In Benton County, we hope that you see this by more communication with the Department of Corrections since you contract with them to do probation services. There's a new requirement for the Department of Corrections to do a comprehensive plan in every county. Community Corrections Act, counties already have to do that. It's basically where you say, this is how we're going to spend the budget. These are the programs we're going to do. But the Department of Corrections will be required to present to the board a plan saying how they're going to provide services in your county. There was $4 million in one-time spending over the biennium for armor radio grants. But one thing I will mention with that, because we know that's not actually enough to replace armor radios throughout the state, is the public safety aid that was in the tax bill can also be used for a wide number of uses. And I believe armor radios are one of those. So that would be a good thing to spend some one-time money on. There's a one-time appropriation of $70 million for community crime and violence prevention grants. Those are for local governments and community-based organizations. There's a wide variety of uses you can use those on, including alternatives to incarceration, reentry services, and other community-based things that help reduce crime and violence. So very broad uses, and local governments can apply for those grants. There's other funding and policy, which you'll read about in the summary. Some of the focus was on juveniles. They're creating a new Office of Restorative Justice, which will have someone who can help counties set up restorative justice programs in their own county and a grant program of, I believe, $4 million or maybe it was $7 million that goes along with that to help people start those programs. So I will stop there. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair. Thank you for the update. On the armor radio, that number really came down, didn't it?
Yes, so last year, we started with a $250 million ask. And that was coming out of the ARPA funds. So since that account is no longer, it doesn't have any money in it now, or it's all been dedicated. They changed it to the general fund. At some point, the Senate had $10 million and the House had, ooh, I think, $1 million each year. So this was the middle ground they came up with. We're going to talk about it probably again next year and the year after.
I think Benton County's on the other side of that, where we've actually invested on our radio system already and redone it. So I was on the side of, if there's this huge grant coming out, can we retroactive back so we can recoup some of that money that we've already put back in? But with $4 million, that's not going to go very far.
Agreed. And we did try to push for that retroactivity, but given the reduction in funds, they were not open to that at the legislature.
Any other questions for Carly? Thank you.
Thanks, Carly.
Well, in the interest of time and closing, I'm going to move to sort of listing some things. What I don't have on the slide, another area where your staff will see and counties and cities across the state will see significant opportunities. The Housing Committee in both bodies had a $1 billion largely one-time target. So there will be significant new opportunities for both homeownership, rental housing, all across the housing continuum in the coming couple of years. I've mentioned a couple of environmental items as well. And there's a lot more in terms of specialty grants around solid waste management. In addition to the SCORE grants, there'll be money going to MPCA, money going to MPCA to grant out to counties and other jurisdictions for additional money. There's AIS money. There's a lot going on in PFAS cleanup and that sort of thing. I do want to touch base on a couple of, just list general government items. And I know from talking to Joanna Mattson earlier, and thank her for her work, thank Monty and his whole team for all of their support and working with us over session, that you'll be getting an update in a couple of weeks on some things that are impacting county government generally as an employer as well. But there is, the compensation cap limit on local governments was repealed. There's an open meeting law change that allows for a medical exception for all of you to participate from a non-public location up to three times per year. There's election law changes, significant election law changes. There's a new para duty disability benefit. I see that I forgot to put on the slide that there's a new paid family medical leave law in the state of Minnesota that will affect you. There's an Earn Sick and Safe Time requirement that you probably already meet those standards for most of your employees. There are Public Employee Labor Relation Act changes that will most definitely impact you all as an employer and working with your represented groups. And of course, there's cannabis legalization and the impacts of that for local governments. I do want to comment in saying that, that a lot of that work and success is, that's a huge area where collaboration with colleagues at AMC did a lot of work on cannabis and some of those other areas, along with the League of Minnesota Cities. We oftentimes were in the bleachers and signing on to letters, but that's an area where there's a lot of collaboration across organizations that got done as well. So I will stop there. Happy to answer any questions, but all of that will be forthcoming in our summary in more detail later. And of course, as Nancy said, we have a reprieve until February.
Thank you, Matt, Commissioner Pop. I got just a comment is that MICA, me and Matt, we were talking earlier, is about 35% of the population of Minnesota. And then you add Hanupan and Ramsey County of about 33%. So you're looking at 65, 70% of the population is in them too. And I too would like to thank, I think, the MICA staff and AMC staff and even the League of Cities have been working together way more than they used to. And I think part of the results is that we're getting things done, maybe. You know, I know we did have change in the legislative system, but we're getting things done, maybe, that we haven't done for the past few years. But I think the collaboration and working together has made a bigger deal on this.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you all of you. I know you get down to the legislature somewhat and helped out on a number of issues, Commissioner Pop and others, and so it's a collaborative effort.
Thank you. Anything else for Matt? Any of the staff? Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
The update. All right, we'll move on to Roxanne, Land Services Director.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair. I am wondering if we can bump up the Ken Bambum item just?
Absolutely. Yep, I see they're here.
Yes, so they can get on with their day.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so the request before you is actually from the SWCCD and U.S. Fish and Wildlife to waive the conditional use permit application fee of $400 for Ken Bambum. He is planning to install a fish barrier so that carp can no longer travel between two different water bodies. And so this is really of a benefit to a lot of surrounding property owners, not just Mr. Bambum. So, and if you want, the individuals are here from SWCCD and U.S. Fish and Wildlife if you had any questions for them. Otherwise, this will go to the Planning Commission on June 22nd.
All right, thank you. Nate, you guys, any comments you want to share with us at all? If you want to come to the podium so we could hear you, that'd be great. Maybe if you can give us your name and who you're with for our record, that'd be great.
Yeah, John Ryan, so I work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program.
Nathan Sinuski, Benton County, Solon Water and Conservation District.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, just in real brief summary, the basis of this project has no real benefit to the landowner. It's just, he's at the peak of what was historically two separate watersheds of Sucker Creek and Mayhew Creek. And part of the future management strategy by a number of partners is to really improve Mayhew Lake's vegetation and fishing opportunities. One of its largest challenges is carp. And this is really the only primary access point that they are getting in at the top of the watershed because they can't get access from below the watershed. So we're kind of doing our part to help, and the landowner being very willing, despite no real benefit to him, just being a good community member, to allow us to put an earthen structure to reseparate the two watersheds so that when we get to the next phase with the lake management, that piece is already taken care of, so.
Great, thank you. Nate, any comment at all?
No, John pretty much covered it.
Pretty straightforward, all right. Members, any questions for the gentleman while they're at the podium?
Need to motion on this, Mr. Chair?
We do need to motion.
I'll move that we waive that $400 fee. I think it's community working together with.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
I would have to agree with you.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, it's carried, it's been waived. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for allowing that to go forward.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so the item before you is actually a public hearing for a zoning amendment. We have Friedrichs Auto, who's requesting to rezone a very small parcel at the intersection of Highway 10 and 165th Street Northwest. This parcel is under an acre. It's about .8 of an acre. And it's directly adjacent to Friedrichs Auto, which is already zoned commercial. So the parcel is current, the small one is currently zoned agricultural. And they're requesting to rezone it to commercial, to B2, which is consistent with the adjacent property. Here is an overview of our zoning district. As you can see, most of the area is agricultural. We do have that small B2 area where Friedrichs is already existing. To the north, you've got Royalton, you've got another node of B2. And then if we go into our land use plan that was adopted through 2040, where this blue star is along Highway 10, that shows you the location of their business in that subject parcel. That area is actually slated for highway commercial-type uses. So I would say this is definitely consistent with our comprehensive plan in rezoning that for commercial-type uses. Not to mention that in this area, you've also got rice farm supply and a number of other commercial uses. They just haven't, they've been allowed in the ag district, however, they are, they're a commercial use. So it's consistent with the adjacent properties and being on Highway 10. The Planning Commission did review this request on May 25th at a public hearing. They, the criteria that they reviewed are, is here on the screen. We just need to make sure that we're not spot zoning, that it's consistent with surrounding properties. We're not creating an island of non-conformities and that the uses are consistent with those around it. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning request.
All right, we've heard a report from staff. Is there any questions for staff right at this point? All right, if we could please have the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address for the record and what it is that you're requesting.
My name is Doug Frederick. Address is 924 Fourth Avenue in Sartell. And requesting rezoning of a parcel of land that's adjacent to us.
All right. Members, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this agenda item? Anyone here at all? Anyone online? Not seeing any? Final call? Anyone wishing to address the county board?
I have one question.
I'll get back to you in a minute, Commissioner Slung. I'm dealing with the public hearing at the moment, and I'll come back to you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak with the county board? Roxanne, were there any emails or letters or other communications to read in the record?
No.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from any state agencies, cities or townships on this agenda item?
No.
Any official action that was required or affected by the township?
No.
Thank you. All right, county board now have time for questions for staff and discussion. Commissioner Schlangen?
I just have one spelling on the last page. With the handwritten item on the, there's a lot of twos from Highway ten and too small, too far, better to use. One, two should be a T O O.
Is that in the staff report?
No.
Um, that's the application.
And that's fine.
Oh, that's, they wrote that. I, I can't change that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, public hearing's closed. Members of the board, what do you wish us?
Mr. Chair, I still move that we grant.
I'll second that. Any other discussion on the rezoning request?
Seems like an obvious request.
Very obvious. Again, Planning Commission was unanimous.
And I, I think, you know, they've got a business there. It's a very neat respectable business. I think they're doing things right. They're in line with Helena, which was up there as rice farm supply. It's no longer rice farm supply. It's Helena. Henry's Farm stuff and all that's right in there and I think it fits the bill.
Well, and as Roxanne mentioned and Planning Commission discussed, that does fit our comprehensive plan. That whole area is.
Yep. And I don't, we haven't, you know, we've had a few neighbors up there in the past that have given me a call doing some, you know, more or less complaining and they don't, that seemed to have gone away. I think they've done everything to, to help minimize that problem. So I think they're doing a really good job up there.
Good. Any other discussion? We've got a motion second on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. The rezoning request has been granted. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, cannabis legislative, legislative update, please.
Yes, this will be extremely brief. So as you know, the, the House Bill one hundred was passed by Governor Walz. It was signed on May thirtieth. This is an extremely lengthy bill and so the county attorney's office is reviewing that and, and has begun their legal analysis. The state of Minnesota will be conducting additional studies and research regarding the cannabis as part of the new legislation. And then additional regulations will be adopted in the future to provide additional clarity, which may include additional limitations. So we're hoping that and anticipating that on June twentieth, the county attorney's office will be present to provide a legal analysis of the bill. And once we have a better idea of the county, of what the county can actually regulate, then we'll work on how we will regulate and enforce the cannabis bill. So at this time, we just, we have a lot more to learn about this. The one other thing that we anticipate bringing forward on the twentieth is a discussion on smoking in public places. Because that is something that would affect us beginning August first. So there's a number of us, a number of staff, public health, sheriff's office, attorney's office. We're going to meet within the next week or two here, discuss a proposal to bring forward to the county board about smoking in public places. And, and then begin that discussion probably as soon as the twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm going to turn our meeting over to our Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Hyden.
Thank you. We'll now call our, our Human Services Board. Approve or amend the agenda. Bob, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is there any additions or changes?
No.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Consent item one. What do we want to do with that?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion with that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Bob, anything else to add?
No, I do not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned at nine fifty-three and I'll turn it back to the board chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyden. Chris, county engineer update.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Don't you wish I could move as quickly as Bob just did?
You're not going to?
No. Just allow me a moment here to bring up. I'd like to have visual aids. Go to meeting and we'll share. Screen. How do I? There you go. All right. Well, okay, so I wish I could be a bearer of good news, but I did want to make, just be transparent and upfront with the board here. This was a lot of discussion we had last year with our budget and equipment replacement. And we received authorization to move forward with replacing two plow trucks. And the way we purchase our large equipment is through what's commonly called the state bid process. It's a cooperative purchasing venture. Really, I think it started in the early days with MinDOT since they're such a large purchaser of equipment. But most counties, if not all counties across the state, probably utilize them as well. The cooperative purchasing venture, as you know, with other agencies and entities, meets all the state requirements for purchasing, getting quotes and bids and all that. So we're no different and we usually purchase our equipment through the state, state contract. Well, the current contracts, normally you, you get a quote, you, you send in your authorization letter to them and you get the price locked in. That's a big benefit to us and we're not having to go out and get multiple quotes and then negotiate directly with vendors. Well, this past year, just like everything else, price increases, raw material increases. MinDOT was allowing in-contract price increases on their plow trucks, which those same vendors have requested of a smaller agencies, the same kind of thing. I had a discussion with this Matt Figgins. He's, he doesn't work for MinDOT. He works for the Department of Administration. That's the, the agency that administers these contracts. And he confirmed, yes, that they are allowing in-contract price increases under this, this state bid contract. So our two plow trucks that we ordered are seeing a price increase as well. We're seeing an increase of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents per truck for price increase. We originally received a quote of one forty, one ninety-two per truck. I guess maybe the consolation, the good news is it's still within our budgeted amount. If you recall, you guys as a board thankfully did approve a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar equipment purchase with the idea any savings in that account will be saved and carried over to the next year. We will have still some savings, just not as much as we anticipated when we were setting the budget several months ago. So yeah, I just wanted to be upfront and, and bring that to your attention.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Mister Chair, Chris, you really scared me and that is actually a, a breath of fresh air on the eleven thousand because I thought you were prepping us for a large, large number.
Well, good.
Or is that still to come?
No, so this was just for the cabin chassis and it's eleven thousand dollars per, per truck.
True.
Our vendor, so it's Towmaster is the vendor that's putting all the, the dump body plow packages and all the salt spreading equipment on that. They're, they're still holding at their same prices.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's good news there. So, which was, which will be in the two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Just gonna say it.
So that's, that's kind of still out of work and we're still not expected to get the, the two plow trucks until late of two thousand and twenty-four. Yeah, so.
Refresh your memory, what are the ones, are we replacing some? And if we are, are we auctioning those, selling them, trading them? What are we doing?
Well, thank you. Thank you for asking that. So they are, the vendor, we have two plow trucks. They're, they're offering us twenty thousand dollars apiece per truck trade-in. I think we, we had some discussion. There was maybe some desire amongst the board to just see if we can take that to an auction and see if we can bring in more of that. So we still have some options at this point and I'm open to hear what the, the board guidance is if you want to just trade that in or take it to auction.
Mister Chair, weren't we talking about at one time keeping one of them?
That, that, that is correct. So we, we would, we would take two of these two thousand and three models out of service. We would like to keep one as a backup in case another one breaks down. We have a truck that's ready to go.
Well, that's gotta, that's gotta be a good plan, Mister Chair.
For twenty grand, we, we'd keep one for sure.
So, and then so that leaves one of them to either trade in or sell it at an auction.
Mister Chair, is the twenty grand for the complete plow truck chassis, everything?
Yeah, that's everything.
Oh, I think we need to do something different there. I think we're.
When does that decision need to be made, do you think?
Um, when we take delivery, so next year.
All right.
So.
I think the guidance would be we try to sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think we still got a whole nother year on these trucks that we're putting mile and mileage and wear and tear on it. So yeah, I think we've got some time. We can discuss that later this year even is our, part of our budget discussion.
Mister Chair. I, I would have to agree. We did very well with our crack filler when we put it on an action online. Well, I, I think we tried to go the same direction with this.
No, that Mister Chair, but if you drive around and you see some of these smaller cities, they could use a plow update.
So could a township.
Yeah, yeah, or township, you know. I think, I think there's a demand for that, more than twenty thousand dollars.
And they know it's been maintained and.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
You're right. Those, those smaller agencies do benefit because they're not putting as nearly as many miles as we put on them in a year and, and so they still could quite a few years' life. So not asked for any action, it was just an update, so.
Thank you.
That gives me a sigh of relief if you were expecting worse than that.
I agree with Commissioner Kapinski. I, that's, any increase is hard to bite, but that's way more palatable.
Yeah. All right, um, let's keep the, the good news rolling. So we, we need to go out for proposals to get an engineering consultant to design, finish the final design on CASA seven reconstruction. We're still vacant one technician. Our technicians right now are busy on construction projects. We really need to be designing that roadway now for next year's construction season. A big thing we're trying to push for is, is tree clearing this winter. The northern long-eared bat was recently placed on the endangered species list, which now restricts, you can only complete tree removal during winter months. I get, I guess those bats, they hibernate somewhere else under the trees. But they nest and roost in trees and basically the whole state has been declared potential habitat for these bats. So that really restricts us to doing tree clearing in advance of a road construction project in the winter before. If we can't get plans finalized this fall, it would push the road construction back a whole nother year because we'd have to wait for tree clearing the following winter. So we went out for, asked for proposals. We solicited for engineering consultants. We received two proposals back. We received a proposal back from Stone Brook Engineering and from KLJ. We evaluated the proposals. We, we looked at, we evaluated them on their qualifications and experience, how well they understood our project and what they were trying to deliver, their schedule. We put a really tight schedule on them, but there's milestones within that schedule. So we looked at when they were going to get things done, their past performance on projects they've done for us and their total price. And, and we think that KLJ provided the better proposal and we'd like to move forward with using KLJ. We didn't select based entirely on price, but KLJ's price was significantly lower than Stone Brook's by about a hundred thousand dollars. So KLJ's proposal fee, fee proposal was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to design CASA seven. So that four and a half miles of reconstruction is going to cost about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in design. So I come before you today to ask the board to approve entering into a professional services agreement with KLJ. In your package, you received a sample contract. It's a template that was recently updated through the county attorney's office that if you're agreeable to it, we would start negotiating that with KLJ and hopefully get them under contract soon. If everything works well, I would bring a contract back to you the next board meeting for board chair signature.
All right, any questions for Chris? What do you wish is?
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Motion a second to approve of this design contract with KLJ. Any other questions?
I'm.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Was there a question from Michelle about the contract?
We, uh, not at this time. We did have her review it. She, we did put some additional language in this sample contract that was different than the previous time we had a contract with KLJ or any engineering firm. I, I think, I don't know if there's some statute updates on county contracting or something. So, yeah, Michelle has seen it, but she hasn't reviewed anything with, with the vendor's signature or anything on it yet, so. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just wondering if that had been addressed, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion a second. Any other discussion? Hearing not all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
Well, thank you. That helps us keep that moving. The next item is another contract and I bring this up for discussion because yeah, Michelle did review it and did have some comments on this contract. This is what's referred to as the DCP agreement and delegated contract process. So in MinDOT, or in the state of Minnesota, we are a sub-recipient to MinDOT of federal funds. And if we have this DCP agreement in place, that allows us to administer construction contracts that have federal money on our own. And, and I think that's a really good thing that we have that ability and authority to, to, you know, administer our own construction contracts. It's not like that in every state. My prior experience in a different state, the counties couldn't do that. It was the State Department of Transportation that had to administer those construction contracts as opposed to the local county or city. And that caused some issues with what they wanted to do with some of their construction projects. So with this agreement in place, we would still be able to receive our federal funds, which CASA seven is a recipient of federal funds next year. And then still hold the construction contract and administer that contract and deal with our contractor directly as opposed to MinDOT dealing with their, dealing with our contractor. Michelle did provide a memo with some of the things that she had concerns with. These were shared with MinDOT, to which MinDOT said, we've executed this contract with eighty-six other counties, numerous state aid cities, and we do not want to change our contract for Benton County is basically how they put it in the email to me. So I do want to share Michelle's concerns, but still ask the board to consider approving this contract so we can so we can continue receiving federal funds and, and administer our construction projects.
Well, we need to, we need to continue to receive federal funds.
Yeah. We do.
Chris, when, so on, on your agenda memo that you handed, so you talk about in, in the opinion of the engineer that with a constant withholding of the agreement, you're talking about a MinDOT engineer?
No, that's, that's my opinion.
Oh, of yours. Okay.
Yeah, I think that we should still go ahead and enter, even with Michelle's concerns, I, I feel like we should go ahead and move forward with this.
Okay, I just want to clarify who you're referencing there.
These agreements are good for about five years. The board, probably identical language in two thousand and eighteen, approved this contract as well, so.
I'll move approval.
Second. Any, we have motion a second. Any other discussion on approving this MinDOT contract for CASA seven? Any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, Chris.
All right, I have nothing else on the agenda except that you want to mention, if we want to talk about at the end of the house, I was able to make contact with Next Air Energy and invite them to a work session. To be in person, they, they suggested July seventeenth and eighteenth, but they're open to virtual WebEx meetings or something at, at other dates too. But in person, and like I said, we can discuss that later when you set cows, but July seventeenth or eighteenth is dates that they provided to me.
All right, maybe just a very brief update on County Road sixty-two. I see the centerline culverts are working on and.
Yeah, so we have daytime closures as we're closing those and we're opening them up daily. Good news is our pipe contractor is about a week ahead, so we should be able to, I think we might get sixty-two pipes. Centerline certainly done this week, probably a lot of the entrance pipes. The downside is the, the milling contractor and the paving contractor, they're not able to move their schedule up to, because our pipe contractors.
Sure, but better than waiting, right?
Yeah.
But better, better than waiting on the culvert guys.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right. I think while we got dry weather now, let's get them in and out before something changes with the weather and stuff, so.
All right, great.
So are they getting ready to mill and, and that on twenty-one and fifty-six?
That would be the first ones that they mill. Yeah, but they, they weren't going to be, their original schedule wasn't going to be until even next week to mill those. So I don't think anything's changed with moving those up any sooner than that, so hopefully not any later.
Can't have any weather delays.
No, that's exactly right. Yeah, that's not an excuse that we're accepting right now.
Right.
Any other questions for Chris while he's here?
Mister Chair, more of a statement. Chris, I wanted to bring back exactly what Steve said at, from MICA about your, your commitment to the state and our county and everything like that with, with the organizations would. With the organizations with DOT and and all the the roads and bridges. I wanna keep, from my standpoint, I would like to keep you involved with all of that and keep that moving forward, I think it's good for the county, and we do benefit at the end.
I agree, thank you.
One more comment, so he talked about money for corridors of commerce, do we have anything that we can can seek out for Benton County?
Well, the corridors of commerce is gonna be probably restricted to trunk highway, since they use trunk highway bonding. So we could look at that and suggest projects in Benton County, if it's something on twenty-three or Highway ten. What I think we're gonna pursue is you heard a lot of money for local roads, and that's being dumped into the local road improvement program, which is a grant process, so. The benefit of that program too is that we can apply for that grant to be our local match for federal projects, so. Big thing in my head is Casas two, that we received some federal money, not even half of that project is federal money. Let's see if we can pursue the rest of that with that local money, and that saves us some state aid, so.
Yeah, that was that was the one that I was thinking maybe we could get some money for.
The big thing you heard too from Steve say is these named projects, as he was saying the nice way of saying earmarks. So we're seeing a lot of those come through the state now, and and we pursued, you know, some named projects for Benton County, and we were unsuccessful. And I think what we're learning is, don't don't expect your first ask to get money, it's gonna take multiple asks, so. And that's where I kinda believe too, we kinda need to be at those tables as well, ringing Benton County's bells, hey, remember us, remember us too. So as our neighbors get money, let's hope we don't get forgotten.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because even last year, everyone told told us, right, Commissioner Kapinski, that uh. It's usually not the first time, but the second time is when you get it.
Yeah, I think. We were told it was basically uh the a good club to be in when you're out there, but nobody brags about going out there. Because it's uh, it's one of these things where they don't wanna let the cat out of the bag. They they basically say, you keep coming out here and you'll, your your dreams will get fulfilled, but it may not be year one, it might be year two or year three.
So I think that's what we gotta keep, keep pursuing those opportunities, so.
Chris, I wanna thank you too, I had asked Chris to uh update the Highway twenty-three Coalition Board with some of the new information coming out of the state legislature. And him and Jody from Stearns County were actually able to be at the Highway twenty-three Coalition Board Meeting, I attended virtually, but gave us a great update. And it was a good presentation and and allowed a lot of those board members to be able to ask specific questions of county engineers on how this is gonna affect. Trunk Highway twenty-three running through all of our counties, so I I really appreciate that.
It's those are policy things that they didn't get in, that Micah didn't get into today, that maybe we'll get into someday, but there's always strings that seem to be attached with with new money. So with this bill as well.
Thank you, anything else for Chris? Alright, Commissioner Meeting Updates, who would like to start?
I can go first, I forgot my uh my calendar at home, but I had a very light schedule. I, we had a broadband meeting that uh with the San Clau de Foley um fiber, so that that's continued in the works. Uh Commissioner Heinand and myself had a meeting with Amanda at uh Sartell with uh with a potential development area, so. Uh that uh that went well that night, so. Yeah, that's that's really uh, uh that's really all I had.
Okay, Commissioner Pop?
Yes, I had uh, well, the good news was I had library board meeting, it was a a long, long meeting, we have. We have people that come before us with the the review of books now, books they don't want in this section, that section. So, I appointed a committee of uh. Two commissioners, the one commissioner and and some laypeople, and I got some pushback on who I appointed, but what I did is what I did. And then the good news is Benton County will have about a fourteen thousand dollar reduction. To the library needs this year, we 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 had a um Wright County was gonna have an increase, and they were pushing back pretty hard on that. So we went to Wright County for zero, and which resulted in Benton Morrison getting a larger decrease. Otherwise, we would have been maybe like five thousand bucks, so thank Wright County in some aspects for pushing to have no increase in the library service. And then we had the BP, pardon me, oh, one thing I was gonna mention on this, um we got an email. From a library uh deal, rather, it says, rather late than never, a library book. That was checked out in nineteen twenty-seven was returned to the St. Hel- St. Helena's Public County Library in California. The overdue overdue fees were waived, which added up to seventeen hundred dollars after ninety-six years. But they got the book back after ninety ninety-six years, so, and in the aspect of that, you know, we raised, we eliminated. Late fees a number of years ago at the library, and we're actually revenue neutral or plus because of that. Because more people came to start checking out things that weren't coming to the library because they had the overdue fees, so. But maybe not anything from nineteen twenty-seven. And then we had the BP Board Meeting, and uh that's is going well, we do have a few businesses that um are no longer. Um gonna be members, uh we can't get the the Height and Dental in Rice, they changed hands, they're now owned by somebody in Stearns County. And they see no desire to be a member, um the one that we're, need to work on a little bit is Jack and Jim's in Duellum, have us not. Paid their membership, and we've used them for a couple of different things in the county, so we probably should, you know, get down there and see if we can get them to join. Um and the other part is that uh the old Creamery Cafe in Rice, who has catered a lot of meals for us, and they haven't renewed. So, then we're kinda working on, those are three of the the main ones that we were kinda working on, that we should get. Uh Rice Building, Rice Contracting out of Sock Rabbits, they finally came across and paid their membership, so. Um, you know, we'll pick up a few, we're gonna lose a few every year, they do that, and other than that, she had just a lot of confidential stuff that. Projects that are moving forward, um extremely busy and and that even with the, you know, with the interns, she's extremely busy, I don't know. How we're gonna get all that stuff done if it moves forward, so.
And that was all that I had, alright, Commissioner Sloman?
Um, I was basically at all the cows that we had together, I did listen in on the AMC. Uh post-election, or post legislative session uh update, and we got a pretty good update from Micah on that. Uh went down to the Transportation Alliance Session Wrap-Up. And um one thing they said about the job impact in the workforce was like um thirty to forty thousand more jobs. Coming up with all this construction, and the DC Fly-In is going to be September nineteenth to twenty-first, if anybody's interested.
Okay, anything else? Alright, Commissioner Heinand?
What was the dates, the nineteenth to the twenty-first of September? Great, thank you, uh just the same meetings as Jared, the only thing. We also sat in on a ECRJC meeting, East Central Juvenile Regional Center, uh where we house our juveniles. Uh they're not taking non-members anymore at this point in time, so they still have space. Ninety percent. So that was actually really good news to hear, so, and that's about it.
Uh Tri-County Solid Waste, uh we have a new director over there, her name is Gabby, um her last name is slipping from me right now, but she's from out east. Uh she started in May, so we were able to get introduced to her, uh we had a very good turnout, our Cities and Township Meeting, I thought I was pleasantly surprised. I thought it was a very good discussion, and it it what actually came out of it is they'd like to have another one, so we're gonna do two a year. So that was good, we had a lot of great discussion, I think the informal part of it helped, and we opened it up for them to just ask questions, so it was good. Um Highway twenty-three Coalition uh Board Meeting, I mentioned, uh Planning Meeting, just a couple of the highlights there. Of course, we talked about our rezoning request, there was a home business uh request, which is always kinda nice to see, uh we've got somebody starting up. Roxanne, remind me, do you remember what that home, was it uh hairstyling?
Yes, a salon.
A salon, thank you, um another gravel pit that uh is gonna be reopened, it's Le- Leash Pit down by Duellum, uh TJ Work, Dirt Works is gonna be doing that. And then we had a request for a seasonal worker housing out at the Cashmere Farm, so I can build a nice facility out there to house some seasonal workers, which. Which will be more than seasonal, I'm sure. So anyways, that's some highlights from Planning Commission, of course, we had our cows that you all mentioned, we had a very good discussion with GLT last week. And looking forward to that next meeting as we continue to move forward with our space needs ideas, so. Um any other comments, committee meetings from commissioners? Alright, Roxanne, Brian, Christine, what am I missing? You're here to do Committee of the Holes, or, okay, um so what do we have for Committee of the Holes?
So, the first one I have just needs to be read into the record, and that's gonna be the uh meeting with GLT Architects. On Monday, June twenty-sixth at eight o'clock AM. That just needs to be read into the record. And then, the second one is the Tax System Cow, and that's, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Go ahead, what would you like, when you, what are you thinking, or when, ideas for us?
Uh, well, I think Monty should be there, so after the twentieth. I'm more readily available than these guys, so.
Yeah, so if it's after the twentieth, I mean, the the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth works for me, or.
Yep, I'm open any of those days.
Ah Commissioners, we have that cow with GLT on Monday, how about Tuesday morning, or would you like to try to stuff this in?
How long is it gonna take?
Yeah, at the most, I think maybe an hour.
Why don't we do it right after the GLT?
Would you like to do that, does that work for everybody since you're here? Could we tentatively plan ten thirty? On Monday, and and I guess we would just do it at the end of our GLT discussion, if that would be okay? Would it be approximately ten thirty?
That's, that's fine.
So Monday, June twenty-sixth at approximately ten thirty. Alright, anything else? Thank you for moving forward on this, should be some good discussion. Alright, Beth, anything else?
Chris, did you wanna send a cow?
Yeah, would you like one, the seventeenth or I think the eighteenth is actually a board meeting day?
Uh the twentieth of June, are you talking?
Well, for Next Era. Yeah, they said July for the next time to be in person.
I, how do we feel schedule, I don't have a problem meeting with them virtually.
I don't either.
If we wanna move forward faster, I guess, do we need to, I don't know.
Well, yeah, um I think the, it all ties into our five-year plan discussion and what their plans are.
Does it make you nervous to wait till then, or where are you, are you okay with?
No, I guess, it does affect the budget, cuz yeah, right now that twenty-five, I think the question is twenty-five, and we have it planned for next year as a mill and overlay. If it's not that next year, it will affect the the highway budget and what we budget for construction spending, so. I don't know, we could tack it, if you're okay virtually, we could see if you wanna tack them onto another cow in June.
When is our next cow in June, though?
Not till the twenty-sixth.
You know, when you think about it, you know, no levy is effe- is going towards road construction. And that's the big thing, is why we get a budget, so you can set a preliminary levy in September, so. As I think about it, it's not the end of the world if we wait till July, because it's, it's just gonna affect that line item, which isn't funded by levy anyways. We can still amend that, I would assume, up until the final budget adoption in December, so.
So, Mister Chair, so if we, if if Next Era comes in and we're talking about County twenty-five. I mean, if we're just gonna do a mill and overlay, we're fine, if we're gonna do a reconstruct, this is gonna be pushed out a number of years anyway.
That's true, yeah, and I think the kinda discussion was like, talk more about their construction activities, when they're constructing it. How do they see equipment and materials moving around the site, and and I think, since that's kinda the edge, maybe eastern edge, or maybe twenty-five is right in the middle of their. Their site.
I've also heard through the grapevine that they're taking uh a larger portion of this down into Haven Township in Sherburne County now. You know, there's not as much gonna be in Benton County.
That would be a good reason to have some update.
Yeah, so we should probably have them here for updates.
What's your thoughts about a cow right after a county board meeting on the eighteenth?
Well, they'll be in, didn't you say they would come into our?
Seventeenth or eighteenth, they would be able to come here in person.
You're talking have them at the board meeting?
Right, yeah, give us an update at the board meeting.
And then maybe, could we, could we meet with them after then?
Then we could, yeah, cuz I don't know if they wanna go on to.
See, I just don't, that's hard discussion to have during a board meeting, that's why I'm saying, do we have a cow afterwards with them, as long as we're here?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
If they give a partial update.
Authority then, do you know, probably not.
Probably not, and I I don't think that's.
Gonna have one on the twentieth.
We're gonna have one June twentieth, yeah, um, yeah, I don't think there's any reason to have one, another hearing that close.
So how about we do this, we set a cow at approximately ten thirty on July eighteenth? After our board meeting, and then as we get a little bit closer, maybe that first meeting in July, we confirm it.
Okay, yeah, alright.
That be okay?
Yep, I'll go back to them with that, and then, yeah, maybe if that's the case, do you do you need to even set that today, or do we need to set that the first meeting in July?
We could set it the first meeting in July.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, we'll set the cow, the first meeting in July for July eighteenth.
Alright, I'll go back to Next Era with that date and time, and then, yeah, bring back.
It'll just be after our board meeting.
Sure, okay, yeah, and it'll be more of a cow, it'll be a cow, not there.
Anything else, Chris?
Mister Chair, uh Chris, I wanna get with you here in the next few days, but I think we really should approach uh. MINDOT on all the traffic on one. I mean, I I think their their um commitment to the county on the redirection of traffic is very, very low. So I'd like to keep, keep the pressure on them in case that raise grant comes in for some dedication towards fixing that road. After, after this next two years.
That brings up a good point, did they address the reroute on the County Four and Six again for the closure here?
Yeah, so that's right, they did acknowledge that, and um they will reimburse us for that under the original detour agreement. So, um we have additional days, last year, it was, cuz it was anticipated to be finished last year. Um we have additional days of the total Casas four length, and they acknowledged via email that, yeah, they're detouring. Uh on four and six this year, and they'll count that mileage.
It was about seventy-five grand last year, wasn't it?
It was, yeah, so.
Some proration of that. For this round. Alright, anything else for cows?
Move to approve cows, Mister Chair.
Motion a second to approve our cow listing, all those in favor? It's carried, members, anything else?
Tomorrow.
Yes, thank you, reminder tomorrow, we need to be here ten thirty, ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen, yep.
Fire up the grills at ten thirty? Alright, anything else?